Okay, we're gonna go ahead and call the meeting to order. This minute. Laurlee, would you please call the roll?
Um, Stu Boyd.
Here.
Denise Chapman.
Here.
Amy Doran.
Here.
Dawn Kirk.
Here.
Barbara Cruz.
Here.
And Alexandra Lessin.
Here.
Nancy Rumpf.
Here.
She wasn't here.
Thank you. Um, Nancy, would you leave us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Nancy. And I'm gonna turn this right over. Oh, no, we have to do the adoption of the agenda. I need to have a motion. And first of all, are there any changes to the short agenda that we have for today? They probably haven't seen one. Did you see one online?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Any changes? All right. Hearing none, I'll take a motion to adopt the agenda for today, May 30th, 2024.
I'll move.
Second, Nancy. And Denise, is that right?
Yes.
Denise.
Um, Stu Boyd.
Hi.
Denise Chapman.
Hi.
Amy Doran.
Hi.
Dawn Kirk.
Hi.
Barbara Cruz.
Aye.
Alexandra Lessin.
Aye.
Nancy Rumpf.
Aye.
All right. Motion carries. We're all set to go, and I'm gonna turn it over to Dr. Schaefer, and he'll pass it on to the others.
So, good evening, Board of Education. Tonight, at our special meeting, we have a concerto in three movements for you. So, our opening will be to discuss two options for Berthet in terms of capacity and needs. The second portion of our meeting will focus on a potential bond initiative. And the third portion of our meeting will focus on a special, a potential special mill levy override. And so, we've broken it into three parts. And so, as has been our custom, staff will present. We have a short presentation, which will precede the discussion and questions and answers and comments. And so, we'll, the first part will focus on Berthet and only Berthet, and then we'll pause for our discussion. We've got 90 minutes scheduled for this, but we will take as long as the board wants for this. And then we'll move on to the bond and then the special. Our intention here is really to provide the board with the necessary information that you need and want and have your questions answered. And so, while ultimately, staff will be making recommendations, ultimately, the purpose of these presentations is to provide you with information that's necessary for you to make a decision. And as a reminder, we're not gonna make any decisions tonight in the special meeting. We're gonna make our decisions formally in August, but we wanna provide enough on the runway to answer and address your questions. So, this evening, I'm joined by a very talented trio. We have Gordon Jones, our chief financial officer. We have Todd Piccone, soon to be our assistant superintendent, pending approval of operations. And Dr. Melissa Snyder, also soon to be our assistant superintendent of academics and instruction. So, I'm gonna turn this presentation first over to Todd.
Great. I'm actually gonna tear it up real quick and tear it up for Melissa.
Right. Good evening, Madam President, members of the board, and Dr. Schaefer, Melissa Snyder, chief academic officer. I have the first part of this presentation, and I guess I'm a little quick, so I'm just gonna go right ahead. You've all just heard this over here right here. So, we're gonna jump right into school size. So, I'm going to give you what I have and what I know from either research, professional experience, or our own local situations around school size in the most objective and neutral way, so that you have the information that you need to decide how you wanna proceed. This first slide is one that is a sampling of schools from across the state, showing their size and showing how they perform. A trend that we have seen in Colorado, so just speaking from a Colorado state standpoint, is in general, our school rating system and our school funding models actually have some preference towards larger schools, intend to either disadvantage smaller schools or, in a way, assess their performance in a way that comes out in looking not as high as larger schools. Now, right or wrong, I'm just reporting to you, that's what we have seen in Colorado. So, that is a sampling of some Colorado schools. You can see their size. You can see how they perform. In this particular sampling, you do see that some of the smaller schools perform less, but there's also trends that show that smaller schools can perform high as well. So, I wanted to show you that. Then I wanna talk about some research. This is a summary of not extensively of all of the research that there is about school size. But what I do want you to know is that there is a dearth of research on school size. It is either very scarce or it is old. So, it is truly difficult to find what is going on as far as school size recommendations in the year 2023. So, taking from what we had, and we had a few literature reviews from Hanover Research, a 2014 study that was specifically geared towards elementary school size from Hanover Research, but again, that's 10 years old. I found the research to either be inconclusive on how school size determines student achievement, or it had, at times, depending on the study, had a slight slant towards smaller schools, especially for certain student demographics, and also had a larger school size slanted towards secondary schools. So, again, there was just a real mishmash of research out there as far as anything leading towards a conclusion around this school size is definitely the best for kids. I didn't read that type of a statement in the research that I reviewed. And moving along here, I wanna talk about Hattie's research. This research is not necessarily on school size, but it was worth bringing into the discussion because oftentimes, our practices and our discussions in professional development root right back to this research. This research, Hattie did meta-analyses with thousands of studies in education to determine what factors influence student achievement the most. The factors that he researched were tied back to six different things. They were either tied to home, student, school, curricula, teacher, or teaching and learning approaches. So, they were agnostic of school size, school size being one of the factors that was tested. So, along those, the two right-hand columns where you can't see what all of the factors are because they're so small, what we did is kind of put it under a microscope lens, and you can see that school size as a factor influencing student outcomes was ranked 106 out of 252 and then 59 of 138. The highest effect size pieces were these pieces here. Collective teacher efficacy, student expectations, response to intervention, peer tutoring and extracurricular opportunities for students, among others. So, I have a more logical copy in front of me right now. But a couple of the other most highest, highest effect size factors were the collective teacher efficacy, teacher estimates of achievement, cognitive task analysis, response to intervention, Piagetian programs, conceptual change programs, prior ability of students, self-efficacy of students, teacher credibility, and on it goes. The, the size of the school as a factor was not in the category of the highest impacted effect sizes on student outcomes. It's not to say that it wasn't a factor, but it is not one of the highest factors that we go after when we're doing professional development and really targeting things that we can do for kids that might actually change their outcomes. I think that that's my last one. And if it is, I'm gonna go back and say what I, a couple of more things then that I wanted to say on my own professional experience in being, having been in smaller schools and having been in larger schools, as well as some of our own local data. For what it's worth, I taught in a K-12 building for the first three years of my career that had roughly 25 kids per graduating class out in rural Colorado. So, I had the experience of the small community and the small class size. I had 12 kids in my class, and I can honestly say I would know how to get in touch with every single one of them today. And so, the relationships in a small school atmosphere is, I think undeniably, much easier to do, much easier to accomplish. So, I wanna just point that out as something that I experienced having been in a smaller school. I also have worked in a school with over 500 students in an elementary school where we had a complete fine arts program, an orchestra, a choir, dance, and other things that were offered. Because we had that critical mass, we were able to run programming like that in fully staffed, gifted and talented programs and things like that. So, I wanna say there's just kind of like both ends of the spectrum that I have personally seen as an educator. The other piece that I wanted to give to you as well is what I, I pulled our school performance frameworks for all of our elementary schools, and I sorted them by small schools, under 200 students, medium schools, 200 to 400 students, and large schools, elementary only, 400-plus. What I found in our own data is we have five schools, including our charter schools, that have 400-plus kids. All five of those schools are on performance. So, I have their DPS here. Our medium schools, we have 14 schools that are between 200 and 400 students. And of the 14 schools, two are on improvement plans. One is on a priority improvement plan, and the remaining 11 are on performance. For our small schools, under 200 students, we have two. One began the year in turnaround and has now requested to reconsider and is on priority improvement. And the other one is on priority improvement. We have no small schools under 200 that are on performance. So, I wanted to objectively give you those data so that you had something to think about. And I'm happy to answer questions, whatever the questions do come up. But that's the data I wanted to offer you all. Thank you. Do you have a quick?
I do. Okay, thank you, Board. So, what I'd like to do is set back a few years. So, we've all seen this beautiful schedule now 40, 50 times without the community, but it was very purposeful. Because looking at the schedule back in 2223, it's the same as it sits today. And the reason I wanna point that out is when you look back in March of '22, we actually started talking to the MPC about these options at that point. So, you know, from the MPC hearing the options in '22, all the way through, you can see what's been completed. And what you'll see in the coming slides from really January '24, I'll present on just comments from community forums. So, one of our commitments was to go out to the community, to staff, and really do that outreach so we could understand where the community was at. So, I just wanna show this again, that we're now in, you know, May, June-ish. We know the last time MPC presented to the board a recommendation, you know, that was also laid out since we issued the schedule. And then we have some discussions and decision points moving forward, which Gordon will talk a little bit more in the, in the coming slides. But that's just the overall schedule that we've been working on since we started this a year and a half plus ago. So, we'll dive into some demographic needs. Obviously, these are the boundaries of Berthet, Ivy. So, blue being Berthet, green being Ivy. And this is what the need is that we've presented on now for quite some time. So, about 250 seats in the next six years, we have the two options. A little more information I wanna provide tonight was just the projected growth. So, what we did is we met with the town, their developers, and got their growth models for the next six to seven years. So, when I say that, when you look at specific, the, of the farms, you know, it's 1,200-plus-ish units. Farms, you know, say 1,000. Vantage, you know, 1,000. So, we've captured all their build plans for the next six to seven years. So, from that, what we could then do is say, okay, if that's gonna track, which is the projection, so we're projecting a medium projection here, you can see where both Berthet and Ivy will be in 2030. So, both will be right around that 600-ish range. And then you can see the increase by year. So, that's strictly from the projected building permits, working with the developer in the town. And just, there is also a plethora of information on the Berthet's website about what developments are in progress and already approved. So, we'll go through all the comments here. I'll just make a few general notes. Staff comments, so this was from staff meetings at Ivy, Berthet, L. And then there was a SAC meeting. There was a combined meeting with Turner, Berthet, Ivy, and Berthet High. So, this was the notes captured from there. You know, again, not going through all those. We can read, we can all see what's there. But just to provide a general summary of all the comments that were captured in those meetings. Again, we did the same process, and all these really had the same sort of field sort of process from here forward. MPC, we did a process to where we, you know, did the chart paper, explained the options, and then let, let the room really go and write down their pros and cons of the different options. So, this here is option one. So, this is what MPC's comments were on option one. You know, at this time, within MPC, they had, they had the data for the numbers. We looked at boundary changes, all those pieces which MPC would look at. And then you can see option two. Same process for option two. It was just the board within the library, and we just captured the notes. So, very candid notes. We, Tara did a great job of taking these and putting them here, but we have all the paper to kind of show what the outcome of these comments were. So, the process and timeline, just to touch on the process and timeline. So, as I mentioned, we introduced this in March of '22. We did look at boundary changes. So, what would it, you know, say we didn't do anything on option one or option two? You know, we looked at the impact of boundary changes, showing that, okay, we have to open up other boundaries, and then we have to span out basically north in the level to capture the growth. We looked at the capacities of the existing schools, the operational needs, educational enhancements, and all the other pieces in between. So, it's hard to mention, you know, everything we looked at. But the goal here was to give MPC the blush of all the information we had in the last year and a half. As you know, last meeting, MPC recommended on May 6th, they had the final meeting. And the discussion approval or approval of the analyst to go forward with our recommendation. And I just, you know, I thought it was important to, on a second bullet point, to note MPC's role in all this. So, you know, as we were working up to the last meeting, they're a planning advisory to the board. So, you know, they don't make the decision. You know, they're just, not just, but they are community members that are taking all this information, and they're making a recommendation as, as the board policy states. So, just thought that was important to note. Feeder comments, again, this was just the feeder comments from Berthet High School when we were down there. This was a process, and it's the same exercise we did with Melissa Snyder's team. So, we had all her directors in a room. It was the same presentation given. And then, okay, here's the boards. Go write your pros and cons for option one and option two. Again, this is the candid summary of those comments, but that's where they land. You know, let's spend a little more time here. So, you know, as we looked at, the comments was a piece of it. MPC was a piece of it. But then we have operational, just district impacts. So, when we look at the needs at Berthet, Ivy, and Turner, if we build a new school, you know, those schools are gonna have excessive needs. You know, the schools were built back in the '60s. Actually, Turner's date was 1920-something, the original schoolhouse. The summary there is there is really excessive needs in all those schools, you know, if we don't do what we're projecting or looking at in option one. The second thing, when we look at air conditioning, we talked about the impact, but 1,600 students about. Look at air conditioning, option one. So, option one includes AC in those three schools. Bullet point three, when we looked at the impacts, when we put the investment in Ivy, Berthet, and Turner, it saves about $22 million in maintenance backlog. Because we're putting new AC in, new windows, doors, trim, anyway, the new pieces of the building, it really wipes out the backlog of maintenance for those three buildings. Another piece that is a little different now, if you're familiar, the ECE in Berthet actually sits in Turner Middle School's lot. It works, but there's an opportunity here with this proposal is to add ECE at Berthet and Ivy. So, that'll put an ECE classroom at Berthet and Ivy rather than being at the middle school.
That would be really, really good.
And then also wanna create efficiencies in budget, which Gordon will talk about a little more. And then these last two bullet points are really connected. But what they show and the challenges we have, we have a couple of challenges. When you look past the next six years, there's a new school that is gonna be needed in the Berthet area if we're just talking about option one. The challenge is when you put a new school, stay at the Farmstead site, because that's what makes the most sense, you'll see the growth is really central. And so, what we'll have is we're dissecting the central part of Berthet and then busing students to the new school. The challenge is, which, which can be done, you know, we have students that'll be looking almost like at Berthet L and then not be able to walk there, but then have to be bused to the new school. When you look, you know, oh, what did I do? I was gonna use this fancy.
It was hard.
But you look at. Where the growth is, yeah, that's fine. You see the horizontal, between the color purple and pink, you know, that dividing road will, will be one of the dividing roads we do to then bus students over there. So, you can see the central part of Berthet is really where all the growth is. So, nothing can't be done, and it, it can work. It's just, it does create some challenges because essentially, the growth that's projected here in the future and the current growth is in that same central corridor. So, that's why the bullet point of future K8s up there, when you look 10 years down the road, Turner's gonna be at its capacity. We're also gonna need more capacity at elementary. And then you can strategically put a new elementary or a new K8, you know, out towards, more tighter towards '25, where you're separating all the schools in a moment. The other challenge we have with the Farmstead site that's shown here is we are dedicated to the site. The issue we have is we can only take the site as fast as the developer develops it. So, right now, you know, they've slowed down because interest rates. Anyway, long story short, there is risk that, there's, there's two possibilities. One, we just sit and wait, wait for the site to become ready, which could be two, three years down the road. We're sitting at the well then of the developer. The other option is, is that we do a significant infrastructure investment and actually develop the site. So, which both can be done. The challenge is the one side, you know, we're gonna need growth. We're gonna need room for kids, like soon. The challenge with the other one is you're talking millions to develop the infrastructure because the site right now is sitting in the middle of a field. It's on the east side of Canterwood 1. So, if the developer doesn't get there, and we need to start the site, we have to take the water and sewer utilities, electrical, internet, develop it to, to the site. There's always an opportunity to get a developer reimbursement. I would say from doing this in other districts, it's not, always doesn't work out. So, that's, anyway, I just wanna be open with the board and share those couple of challenges we do have with sites, the two sites in the Berthet area. From there, Mr. Jones.
Thank you. Madam President, members of the board, Dr. Schaefer, Gordon Jones, chief financial officer for the district. The next couple of slides that I will go over rather quickly are intended to show the potential impacts, and I say estimated or potential impacts, of what option two could look like. That's not to say there wouldn't be impacts with option one, which is the improvements and additions to the three existing schools. The assumptions that have been made on these slides is that the growth in student count, if it requires new teachers, it would be a neutral impact, whether that is in existing buildings or at new buildings, with the understanding that staffing at certain, in certain positions follows the kids. So, wherever the students are, there would be costs involved. So, that, that's a neutral or equal, equal consideration for both scenarios. Another option, or another item that is not contemplated here would be any additional transportation costs with one option or the other, with, whether that be shifting of boundaries with the three existing schools or creation of a new school, or building of a new school. No considerations here for transportation costs, assuming that those would be on a like-for-like basis as well. So, looking at the estimated costs for building a, a school of comparable size, and we have a good, a good record of this in the district, you can see down the list. I'm not gonna run through that list completely, but you can see the FTE, the number of FTE, and then the anticipated FTE costs or salaries plus benefits. And you can see on the right-hand box, the salaries that are included in that, which is the typical list that we include with, with all of our budgeting that we do and actual expenditures. So, there's certainly licensed staff with the creation of specials. There's some efficiencies that can be assumed in option one where maybe underutilized or understaffed specials teachers could, with increased enrollment in those schools, could have a full-time position. So, there could be an increase in, in their roles to make them a full-time position. But at a minimum, there would be some specials needed at a, at a new school if it were to be built. Counselors, the rest of those, again, I'm not going to go down the list. You can see they're pretty, pretty typical when a new building is open or in any building that we have in the district, that we have a minimum level of staffing, and that's what these costs are anticipated to involve. You can see at the bottom, 12 and a half FTE at about $805,000.
And again, these dollars, we, they're, as Gordon would say, they're fully burdened. So, the principal salary, 157, 600, includes the average salary of the administrator, but all of their benefits that would be included as well. So, that's why para and all of those other things we see. So, that's why it's a bigger number.
Correct. Looking at the non-FTE side of things, which are those non, non-employee-related, utilities, we can look at what our typical utility expenditures are at a comparatively sized school, estimate what those are. I will note on that category, this does not include efficiencies that would be gained under option one with the replacement or installation of improved systems that, that serve the building, whether that be from an air quality standpoint. That's probably the largest one. And then a couple of typical things, just copy releases and the number of copies, and cleaning office and cleaning supplies yields an amount of about $84,000 in non-FTE. So, just short of an estimated $900,000 increase for option two, for staffing and non-FTE costs.
And so, as we conclude this section, this is just really a summary slide of the work that we've all done to get to this conclusion of recommending option one. So, it was, you know, between the time and work put in, there was a lot of focus, whether it be on what, and let's talk about myself, Gordon, to come to this part. It was community conversations. Anyway, all those, all those items you see there is really everything we looked at to come to, you know, this option. You know, it is obviously the board's decision. This is what staff is coming to and, you know, is came to and recommended. But this is how we got there. So, I, we just thought it was important to really summarize the points of, you know, the work we all put in to get to this recommendation. So, from there, I think that concludes Act One.
Act One, okay. So, we can have questions? All right.
All right. Let's start, um, just going around. Questions that you might have for the group regarding what they've shared? Dawn, anything?
So I know that part, part of what we're honing in on with the questions around size, you kind of hinted at, but I want to make sure that I'm filling in the blanks appropriately. So the studies you looked at were school size, lots of studies were done on class size. So that's where we know there is data, and that is, I'm assuming, part of how we've done our, like, our policies on class sizes and things like that are informed by those practices. So that's still gonna be there.
Correct.
And I'm guessing that some of those studies that you looked at did say that if you keep the class sizes, like, the class size is, did have some data, like, I guess, is that true? Was there, like, some things that said, yeah, the, the school could be huge, but as long as you have, you know, the right number of students in the class? Like, did it say that kind of thing? Did you find anything like that?
It really was studying the effects of school size and, and on student achievement, the studies that I read. Class size is another topic that is out there. And we know that the lower class size is better for students, I mean, that is, that's highly effective to have lower class sizes. You could have a small school with high class sizes, and you would probably have the same problem that you would have with a large school with high class sizes in, in some ways, because class size is, is its own, uh, kind of phenomenon to study.
Right, because that gets into, like, what you can teach and how much time you can spend with each student, and that kind of thing. Um, and so what we're really looking at then is having still our standards for class sizes. But with option one, we have the benefit of being able to have services, right, because we get that efficiency of scale. So, you know, we only need one principal, which means we might be able to scale up special education if we need it or whatever, right? Like, am I kind of saying that right?
You have more options for programming in a larger school, but you do not need to increase class size along with school size.
Thanks.
All right. Still?
So Todd, is the current status or condition, I'm not quite sure which word to use, of the Farmstead site similar to the condition or status of the High Plains site when the district decided to build there? And the Riverview site when the district decided to build there?
I don't know High Plains open here, I can say Riverview, no. So, for example, Riverview, when we started this process, um, there were streets in and the progression was pretty close to development. Riverview was pretty tight, too. For example, when we started, we didn't have water to the site, even though everything was developed around it. The concern, the difference is, this is in a whole nother plat, that's not even through, you know, it's conceptually through the town and approved now, but there's nothing even in construction to approve to move forward yet. So there, it was platted and the roads were in, in approved, uh, Riverview. Here, the concept of development's approved, but the actual final plat, the drawings are not approved for even construction.
Okay, the reason I ask that question, this is new information for me, I, I wasn't aware of this. So it sounds to me like the Farmstead site really isn't an option because of the amount of money that it would take to put in the infrastructure that's not there, that was there, for example, at Riverview. And so my question is, why is, why has the Farmstead site even been offered as an option?
Because until the downturn of the economy, well, so let me back up. It is an option, um, at a previous district. Districts can do this, it just costs more. So I don't want to say it's not an option, uh, I've seen it and done it before, is that site sitting in the middle of cornfield, in the middle of nowhere, they develop a school there, uh, it just costs more to do that. And we can still do that with this site. Yeah, sorry, what was the other, was the other part of the question?
No, that, that was really my question, was that from what you said, it sounded to me like Farmstead is really not a financially viable location.
It will cost more. Correct, it will, it will cost more, but it is still an option, you know, it was an option.
But a much more expensive option, as I said, that's information I hadn't heard before.
And the reason behind that is, you know, with interest rates, you look at the building permits, it's just that have been issued in Berthoud. You know, they've cut by, I think it's about forty, fifty percent. So the developer, you know, as they're not selling the homes, he's slowed down in development. So that's, if you rewind four years, you know, they're projected to be, you know, still progressing in X amount of permits a year. When that's cut by, you know, a third, um, they're just slowing down. So the site's still platted for us, it's still approved by the city developers, you know, agreed to our IGAs that we're gonna get it. It's just the timing of it with the interest rate slowing and the slowing of development, it's sitting, it's starting to sit more on an island.
So just one, one last question Denise, and then I'll, I'll pass it on to you. So... If the, if we go for a bond issue and it passes, and the, the district decision is to go with option two, at the point that we would be, that school would be ready, there wouldn't be anything in Farmstead in the, in the development, or very little in the development, that would be producing kids, does my question make sense?
It does, they would be. The challenge is, is that the Farmstead development, it's really so large, you know, it spans to the west or to the east, that they're still working on their first third of the west side of the development. So the kids are being produced, yeah, you can see in that one slide. If you look there, kind of by where that is, the kids are being produced in Farmstead. It's just the development's slowly growing towards the east.
Not as many, not nearly as many kids as you thought when, when this site was approved and the planning began, is that correct?
That's correct, yeah, in the straits and everything, yeah, it's, it's a, um, complex web. Yes, so it is different, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And there are no alternative sites in Berthoud that could do this?
There is, so we have TPC, um, site by the TPC clubhouse.
Right.
And it is kind of like built ready. The challenge is, when you look at where it sits, um, it sits in an area where there's not gonna be much growth. It sits on the west side of two-eighty-seven. West of TPC is in a corporate area in county, and they have law restriction size, they have growth restriction size. So then you're pulling from the other side of two-eighty-seven, you know, in the just, it can be done. It's just when you look at where it sits compared to where all the growth is on between two-eighty-seven and west, it becomes a challenge then to then get everyone over to that site. Because it really does not sit in a site, you know, the Farmstead site, it sits in a middle neighborhood, it's gonna be a thousand homes. The TPC site, although beautiful, you know, sits and looks at the golf course and looks at the clubhouse, it's also more around, as you can see, the left side of the Berthoud L boundary. It sits more within the unincorporated Lerman County, which the growth stifled, I mean, there's really no growth coming out of there. So there is an option, yes, um, but purposely it wasn't shown because it... Sorry. It creates a bigger complex.
And let's say bond doesn't pass, regardless of which option we pick. Where are the kids going to go? What's it, what's the, oh no, this is, they didn't get it, and...
So one, I'll say, I mean, I would hope that the board and leadership wouldn't stop going, you know, because there is an issue that we have to fix, uh, so that's option one. Option two is there's portables, so, you know, portables. Uh, option three is boundary adjustments, so change the boundaries. You know, the hope is within those three options that you've, you know, stretched enough time that you can get, get a bond or pass, but... Yeah, I mean, that's really, and it's typical to most districts is, you know, even without, within our board policy, you know, it has mentioned like get to a hundred-and-twenty-five percent capacity, and then so it's, you know, work up to that capacity. But yeah, that's the, yes, that's the, kind of, the three, one is keep going, three, the other two is portables and boundary adjustments.
It's important voters know the options are attractive necessarily, so.
Alexandra? Well, it must be like portables and then, you know?
Okay, that's all I have for now.
Alexandra?
So I have a couple of questions, one, probably for you Melissa, did you, we've been talking a lot about, like, student behavior and discipline issues and stuff like that. Did you come across any research showing a connection between that and school size?
I did read some about, um, s- smaller to medium-sized schools being better for that.
Yep.
That way. And then my other question, that has sort of been gone over, but just sort of to clarify. So it sounds like based on the pace and the location of development, it would be, and you talked about needing a pre-K eight in the, some point in the future. What would be, the reasonable choice would be to do the option one now, and then at that some point in the future, use the existing Farmstead site for the PK eight? Or were, oh, or were you talking about even further east than that?
Yeah, I mean, we go through this with NBC, but conceptually it would be further east on a larger plot of land. Yeah, so we have those pilot funds to be able, that's what they're for, is to buy land and water, so we could use pilot to buy land. For two reasons, when you look at, you know, you separate so you don't become landlocked with smaller, closer neighborhood schools. You separate them out, and it just, it creates more efficiencies than down the road as Berthoud will continue to grow from. You know, when you look at Berthoud now, the growth is in that central corridor. When you look at their projected models for fifteen to twenty years, you know, it starts expanding towards the east. So then that's go, for the east you get, one, it sits on the boundary of another school district, and then, but then we can come from the outside in to capture the students rather than trying to, you know, capture them from the same small geographical area.
And then do we get anything like, so if there's the one, the one, you know, site that's ours in the Farmstead site and the one site that's ours up by the golf course, if we never use those sites, what happens?
So the agreement on the TPC site is, is actually an agreement between us, the town and developer is, we're catching, we're actually capturing pilot for that right now. So if we use the site, we'll actually give them the pilot back, I think it's about one-point-two million. If we don't use the site, um, then just the reverse. So if we use the site, all the pilot we've gained over this, you know, this and then the coming years would actually go back to the developer because then we technically would, the site would be needed to us. So right now it's sitting in a plat approval, so plat approval basically means that it shows us as the landowner on the plat. But the actual, like, transfer of deed to us hasn't happened until we say, and it's fair to the developer, because we don't want to sit on it. Part of the agreement was, we can't sit on it for fifty years if we're never gonna build a school. So it was a way for them to say, okay, you know, we'll give it to you, but here's the mechanism we're gonna do. Farmstead's a little different, um, that structure's a little different than developer, it's changed hands a couple of times, that we haven't received all the pilot, and we're starting to receive some, so it's kind of a balance between those two. It's a little messy here, but we'll work through that, those pieces.
But basically, we don't lose anything by not building there?
No.
We, we gain, it sounds like a little bit.
Yeah, we gain the one-point-two, one-point-three million, yeah.
And just for everybody's identification, pilo is, is the acronym payment in lieu of. So a developer has to do one of two things by Colorado law, they, I shouldn't say that, I don't know that it's by Colorado law. They either have to dedicate land to a school district or make a payment for every dwelling unit that they build in a development to the school district. So just as Todd said, the district can go out and purchase land or water or whatever they need to from a, a real estate perspective.
Okay, so then one more question. So with the issue, so we could use that money to purchase land or water or what have you if we go somewhere else? But if we were to do it in the Farmstead site that needs water, we couldn't use it because it's using that actual land?
Well, we have a, correct, yes, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, there's a lot of government agreements, but to simplify, yes.
Okay, thank you.
So along the same line as what Alexandra was asking, is there enough data now on K eights to show any correlation with the student behavior? Or is it, does it really not matter because they keep, um, up to K five, you know, up to K five so separated that it really doesn't, it doesn't have any impact?
Well, that's a great question. The, the K eight research is really new and, and coming out, it's, it's been around as long as the other levels to actually see trends. We do separate them out in our district when we look at data, we look at, you know, elementary, middle and high. We do look at K eights sometimes as an aggregate, but in terms of like actually trends in behavior or attendance or in curriculum, it's keep that in elementary focus.
And going with option one, which to me addresses a lot of maintenance needs in all of the existing schools. But then, in about six years, maybe then, we will need an actual school. Is that enough time between months?
Well, when you look at the projections, so the schools we build are four rounds, which is about, depending on class size, you know, it can be anywhere from like six-twenty to six-seventy, depending on size, so it's... And then, um, you put on a factor for a portal or two to capture you through those high-growth years. So you're in the twenty-three, twenty-thirty-three range-ish. So it's, yes, I mean, I, I don't know, it's, you know, I'll see. But it's a typical cycle, it's, I don't think it's too far out. Even if it was in twenty-three, you know, that's twenty-thirty, that's six years out.
Yeah, Todd, would you say typically a six-to-eight-year range for like bond cycles have been typical or not necessarily?
No, I would say from experience, the six-to-eight years is typically the cycle that districts do.
So right now, we have a bond that's gonna be empty, right?
Correct.
But in this scenario, we'd have a fairly new one that would go, so we'd have two, I don't know how.
And we typically look at, uh, from a, a bond financial perspective, is we call it wrapped debt service. So building into the, a, if, should the board decide to have a bond initiative on November ballot, the debt service on that would be wrapped debt service, so it means low principal payments for the first two or three years until the other, the two-thousand-five bond or two-thousand-twelve refunding drops off, and then the principal payments increase. So while there is a bond that's dropping off, that's already been contemplated in the, uh, the models that are being considered for a potential November twenty-twenty-four bond, that the principal payments would increase on the twenty-twenty-four bond and the twenty-twelve refunding dropped off.
And will the additional capacity with the remodel, is that enough that, like, in six years, we do another bond? But then it takes a while to build school, I mean, it doesn't just happen overnight?
It is, I mean, that's the goal, is to, you know, get to capacity in the twenty-thirty, twenty-thirty-one, it'll take a year or two. You know, to build a new school, you need more kids than what the school can handle. And that's really what this, this shows, is that they will be full and there'll be more kids, and they'll be bursting. But to get to the point of building and investing, you know, in that type of, that's, okay, if you need all those kids, otherwise the challenge you have is you have schools that are opening, you know, so low and they're taking kids away that it, you know, it's not really, um, I would say feasible, you know, a good way to spend, spending dollars on a, on a project.
So then, this money that we put into all of the maintenance and the remodel and the new HVAC, will that address, as of right now, all of the maintenance, all of the needs of those schools? And I ask that because, my friend, the word is in the presentation. When I saw Peak View, which just recently was remodeled, is on there showing, like, meaning a million dollars. So I was a little surprised. So I was a little surprised by that, so that's why I'm asking, if we do all this money in this bond, does it really address all of those maintenance needs for those schools? So that we don't.
Yeah, I mean, I would say all, you know, like I said, no, but I mean, you know, PP, for example, there was, we did more to that building than we said, there's areas we didn't touch, so that's some of that. But even River View, you know, and it's like you see there was a little amount, but even from a new school or something. So it's gonna get, you know, percentage wise, like ninety, ninety-five percent of it, it's, it's majority. When you look at the major systems that, you know, where a risk is the HVAC, you know, electrical. The envelopes, we talk about the roofing windows, you know, those are all systems that would be new, and those are, I mean, the HVAC alone. Which upside, and I think, you know, in Turner's nine million, so it's. And that touches not just HVAC within indoor air quality, um, the electrical services, so all those pieces then get touched. And you put that in, you have the new ceilings and, you know, so it's just, it, it's newer, we've also gone on to the point of look at the asbestos in the buildings, of those three, there's still asbestos in there. To make sure that we can get to about ninety percent of it out too, so there's still asbestos in the flooring, uh, ceiling tiles. It's part of the deferred maintenance, but it's still there, and that's part of the goal too, is to kind of wipe out. The flooring needs to be cleaned out, the asbestos really should be cleaned out.
Last thing, just like Stu, I, I thought that Farmstead was a more viable option. Even though I know it, we, it can still be done, it just takes a lot more money, which in my mind makes it not viable.
Let's check with Amy. Any questions, Amy? Any questions?
Yeah, I had headphones in, sorry.
Okay.
I had to unhook them, um, no, my questions as far as uh student behavior and the K eight model, all of those things. I think have been, been answered right now, thank you.
As we went around, I had several thoughts across my mind, and I thought about a few of them, and then somebody else asked the question, it kind of resolved it. I think one of the things that I think about with the size of the school is that there's oftentimes when a school gets a little bit larger, it becomes more like a, a school within a school, so a family within that school. And so when you group those grade levels, like what we did at Peak View, putting them close together. It allows them to, um, even though it's a larger school or has the capacity for, for being a larger school. It still allows for that collaboration that the teachers need and support to support each other, so I, that just kind of crossed my mind, I, I thought. And I know some of you have heard this, that our district, getting a while. Have had times where they've had to really be creative and where they put all the kids, and so my first year down at Berthet, the third grade class walked to the church every day and had school in the church. Because it was growing really fast at that point in time, and they brought portals in. There was a point in time when all kindergarten went to a place, um, they were bussed over to a site. It was off, south of thirty-four, on one of those, like I wanna say, um, Monroe or.
Or houses.
Yeah, Denver, somewhere along in there, all of the kindergarten went there. And you know, that was an unusual thing for us to have to figure out, but we had so many kids and we figured out a way to do it, so. Even if we fill up in these next few years with what we do, there's always gonna be a need. We hope, we don't want the population or all the babies to stop coming. But it could be, it's something we have to remember too, that it all changes. So um, I, I appreciate the questions, let's check and see if everybody is, Dawn, do you have any more?
Well, I guess that, one of the questions I have is around the condition of the schools. Since Peak View got mentioned, I think it's. You know, I mean, I know we have, or it's a term that they're almost a hundred years old, but um. It's the condition looking at remodeling.
They all have their, let's say, unique challenges, um, I mean, for example, the roofing on it is about, well, not about them, it is like a quilt we're holding together, so there is some very large towns there. They're old, I mean, the conditions, when you look at HVAC, you know, the, besides the new additions of Berthet and Ivy, they, they are older. You know, I can go through every system.
Yeah.
You can point out, but yes, I mean, another example is just the windows at Berthet and Ivy, you know, they're not. We wouldn't even think about having those in any school today, you know, so it's, you know, it's, you know, almost every system you can point out. And that's why, you know, we even looked at the insulation value of the building. You have the insulation value of those two schools, just Berthet and Ivy and then New Turner. You know, part of the investment there would be to insulate the exterior walls. You know, because there's minimal insulation. So that's the, you know, the type of research that was done is also to be a storage, you can't just put AC in and install it. You know, you've gotta look at the windows and the envelope, you've gotta look at the, so all those pieces. But all those pieces need touch, so it's not that, um, I mean, I mean, we just put money into, you know, Turner and those schools for different areas. Touch some of those, you know, surfaces, but there's still quite a bit out there.
And so option two would be a new school and we, we really wouldn't be doing much with the other three. I mean, obviously there's some things we'd have to do, it sounds like there are things on that list that would be done, but, but very little. And so, I mean, my understanding of it, I'm just saying this out loud to make sure that I'm, what I remember is accurate. My understanding is, is that we, option one would be a process very similar to what we did with PP as far as like figuring out what we need and meeting the needs, I guess not, because it's not, it's not a, it's not quite the same, sorry, but we would be doing renovations, we'd be doing updates to all three buildings. Significant updates, because we're adding on and renovating, right?
Correct, yeah, so it's, it's very different, so just to give you an example on option. We would take option two, like what we would look at doing, Ivy would be doing roofing, because we've gotta put a certain amount of roofing just to protect everything else. And then some educational enhancements that they need, you know, whether it be STEM space or innovation space. Or the library that they, you know, wanna do, be those kind of touch points, but that's about it. And scare vessels. Mostly asbestos would stay, I mean, for example, the, the, the cost to just remove the asbestos is about six and a thousand and a half each facility. You know, and that doesn't count putting the flooring back in or the tile back in, um, so. You know, that's just the gauge of the different types of needs that are out there.
Thank you.
Stu?
First, thanks to the three of you for answering the questions that I submitted in the RFI. I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask a question of clarification, and then I'll say something about the questions that I asked in the RFI. The seventy-five million dollars that you quoted as being either for the new elementary or the remodel of three. A lot of that seventy-five million for the building of the new elementary is infrastructure. Different aspects of that, maybe in the twenty to twenty-five million dollar range?
Uh, it's considerably more than that, so it's in the forty to forty-five million.
Oh, okay. So, I actually had a number of questions, I'm gonna pare those down because I'm not sure that option two is viable, but I wanna, I wanna make, um. I wanna ask some, a few questions that I think are important and make a couple of statements. Having been around this district for a long time. I don't ever remember a time when growth, significant growth resulted in adding on to an existing building. Much less to existing buildings rather than building a new school. I think this is a difference in philosophy. Under the circumstances, it may not make any difference because of what I said about the questioning the viability of, of option number two. But I think it's something that we probably should keep in mind moving forward. Because I think it's definitely a change in philosophy to, to do that, so. I guess that, that's all I, that's all I'll say at this point, and then when we come around again, I have a couple of other questions or comments based on the answers that you gave to your quest, to the questions I asked, and again, thank you for doing that, so I'll pass to Denise.
Do we have any awareness of other ways that people beyond us may be trying to fill, avoid in Berthet? Are there charter schools interested in coming in that may ultimately pull some students out of our numbers?
I can see there has been very high level discussions, but nothing that you can see a plan moving forward.
It'd be great, very terrible to build a brand new building and then have us, not have the same demand, so.
Alexandra?
So I don't have a question, but I would say Stu to respond to your comment about schools not being added on to, I don't know if that's entirely true, like looking at, I mean, Loveland High School has been added on to multiple times because of, of growth and multiple other schools have had significant additions put on them as well.
I should, I should've said elementary, because that's really what I was thinking about, I apologize, I, I was thinking elementary and just didn't say it.
Okay.
There's about five or six that have had units added on to them.
Yes, but not significantly.
Not to change the total floor plan, like. Namaqua was totally changed, Mary Blair had whole big units added on. Yeah, Centennial, yeah, so there've been quite a few, not every, you know, but yeah, but it's, it's, yeah.
And I think, I don't, I don't think I have a good question.
Amy, any more questions?
No, um, sorry, I don't have a question, but I guess just a, a comment. Or a thought, um, you know, I, I think that the town of Berthet really took their time, um, like in their planning and my understanding, and I guess Stu, correct me if I'm wrong, um, I think they've taken all of like walking paths from all of the schools. Ivy, Berthet L. and Turner, and so there's the safe walking paths for kids to get to the rec center. And so it seems like, you know, like that's where they want the community, um. And then I think I received, I think other people did too, probably, received the letter from the, the town. Can't remember his name, my apologies, but Chris, um, the, the town mayor. You know, just about the, the community feel of Berthet and, you know, how adding on to those existing schools might, um. You know, be in line with the community, um, feel goal, you know, that, that Berthet has. I don't know, I, I appreciate Stu all of the questions that you asked in the RFIs, um, those have been very helpful. And Todd, um, Melissa Gordon, thank you very much for, for answering them, I think the questions have been have been brought up. So I guess I, no, I don't have a direct question.
I don't think I have any more either. Dawn?
It seems like option one is, you know, financially more feasible. And also more equitable to every, to every student in those, in elementary and middle. The, the challenge is of, you know, how do we create a, an elementary that's this size and, you know, have and do those things well, since that would be our biggest element, elementaries. Is obviously still something that, you know, that really becomes a program thing more than a space thing, two separate things. And that's where my mind goes, right? Because I do see why that was a question that people had, right, that you think about having elementary kids and you know, um, in a big school and what that looks like, it does make sense that people have questions about that, that would be helpful for us to be able to to really talk about. It, you guys helped to lay out some of the benefits to it and why it was like the, really the way that we leaned in the first place. I think that next level of saying, you know, that design process piece of the space and how do we keep it feeling elementary-like, but also the program element, I think, is another thing that just, the more we can talk about that the better, the more that we can plan for that, the better. Because it is different, so that's just what comes to my mind, it's not that we can't do it, but it's legitimately good questions that we do need to answer.
Melissa, what you said about, um, the significance of, um the study's conclusions regarding school size being kind of inconclusive. As I was looking at the study that was part of the MPC slides, as well as a couple of others that, that I had. What, what I noticed, um, is that the research studies that make that, those, that particular comment about, um, school size is inconclusive. They don't actually provide examples of studies that say that. They say studies, um, show that school size factors are rather inconclusive, but then they don't provide the data to prove that. And whereas the studies, including the one study that was part of the MPC slides, actually does provide data. That shows that there is a relationship between student achievement and school size. In the literature review study that I asked, uh, that we sent to the rest of you that I already had. There was a study that was cited that analyzed sixty different studies that supported the concept of higher achievement and superior school climate and student teacher relationships in smaller schools. So on one hand, there is specific data. On the other hand, there's, well, we don't really have any specific, um, research studies to share with you that show that it doesn't make any difference. So, um. I guess what I'll say about that is that bothers me, that there doesn't appear to be actual research that says that it doesn't make any difference. Let me see if there's anything else that I wanna, I, I guess my last comment, Barb, would be this. This was before I realized that option two perhaps really isn't fiscally viable. It appears to me from what, um, the district provided me and the community that option one generally addresses the upgrade and physical climate of existing facilities. And option two addresses research-based education advantages of a smaller school. And to me, that, uh, those are two very different goals. And, um, I think that's enough for me to say about that.
I'd like to hit this, you know, is option two financially viable if we have to?
Say it again, Denise.
If option two, there's some concern in the room about option two, given that there's no infrastructure in place, will be more expensive. My concern would be it's gonna take longer, um, when are we gonna be able to open it? But what is, I mean, just a range, what percentage or amount would it add to that school to put that infrastructure in place? And what would we lose since we're only getting?
Just going off experience of doing it, um, so I'll get to the school, for example, it's So I'll give you the school, for example, it's Relling Heights in Erie. When it was built, it was paved, it was built in the middle of Cornfield, there was nothing else there, there was County Road, County Road going in Erie. I would say percentage-wise, it's probably about ten percent to ten to fifteen percent more. So in the four to six million-ish. And that's a big guess, you know, but it, when you picture it, you know, right now, the developments, you know, they're focused on developing for the houses they can build right now, that's the only way that they stay alive, you know, so they don't do infrastructure for two years down the road, because they need to build and sell now to pay off what they're putting in. So when you look at that extension, I would say in the range, just to get it about ten percent. As you're talking about, you tapping the sewer that they've put in, you know, taking that, the water, the electrical. And then it's also the challenge of, again, just going to before, which can be done, it's just a risk, the project, which I think is, is, we need to let the board know. The other challenge is, you know, can some utilities get there? You know, for example, that school, I'm mentioning, the internet couldn't get there until like the day before school started. And it was literally traced on the side of the ditch, you know, run open, just to plug in the building, so. It can all be done, I'm one, I think it'll be now to say we can do it, we can, it can be done, but there's just a financial investment to do that. You know, on the other hand, you know, within the next year, you know, say the interest rates fall down and they start going, it might not happen either, so it's not like, you know, so that's, it's part of the equation. But when you look at the projection of, you know, we know, we know, we know the interest rates are up, we know that the building permits in Berthoud are down, you know, projected to be down, that, that turnaround, I don't, it's going to be hard to flip that fast. But even, yeah, I guess that's what the answer is, it's hard to put the, you know, Will's probably trying to put me over there. So don't close that, but maybe that's just the general range for the board to at least have a balance.
So I do have another question that came up from what Amy was talking about, and it might be for you, Mark. In talking with like the Berthoud Town leaders, what's your sense as far as their, their thoughts about this whole thing?
I would say, I know we received the letter that Amy is referring to. You know, I've spoken to the town manager, I haven't really spoken to any of the council, I, I think they're supportive of the district. And I think my, my, I think they would be equally supportive of whatever the district would land down. So I don't think they, they expressed a specific preference, other than that they, they recognize the need for additional capacity and would be supportive of our purpose.
I, I think for me, looking at seventy-five million, it's, we have finite resources, we have to figure out how to do the most good with what we have. And, and serve the most students that we can with what we have. And I just feel like option two has, for me, too much risk, too much unknown additional cost. That, and it wouldn't necessarily serve as many students as option one would, and so I just feel like option one is, is probably the more viable one that will serve the most students for the money that we have available.
Anything more, Amy?
No, thank you.
Okay, I don't have anything more. Everybody ready? Are y'all satisfied? Can we move on to part two, or do you need more time, Stu?
Let me just make one, one comment. The elementary population is exploding in Berthoud. We have to address it somehow. I can be supportive of option one. I'm disappointed that option two's disadvantages weren't made more available.
Thank you, Stu. Anybody else? Okay.
Short break, or, because the next two sections are short, does the board want to break?
Yes, there's some chocolate sitting over here.
Just say, I guess Denise said yes.
Okay. Moving on to part two. Could we go to?
We can go right, so the second part of our conversation is going to be talking about a potential bond. And kicking off is, is it Todd?
Okay. So kicking off, we've all seen this slide before, but the goal of this next section is to really dive into more of the actual needs. So we've talked a lot at just high level about, you know, here's our big buckets, here's the needs. So when we go into what this actually means, we just want to spend more time with the board, ask any questions, and really go through in detail the entire district, so. This takes into account the entire district between the four different buckets we're looking at. And what this first slide shows is we've talked a lot around the hundred sixty million, because that's where the Magellan survey came back at, you know, fifty-seven, fifty-eight percent favorable. Magellan also, you know, the survey came back at two fifty, and it was around the fifty-one percent favorable. So what we did is we took kind of a spot in between, a little more, around the two twenty, so that's the information you'll see here. Is if we were to ask the voters for about two hundred twenty million, here's what it includes. So the difference between the two packages, the one sixty and the two twenty, is an additional thirty million for air conditioning, fifteen million for CTE enhancements, and a little more for maintenance. So those pieces are important, because when we looked at the survey results, the thing that everyone that came back from the survey was, you know, we like one sixty, but here's the pieces we like of the bond, is CTE came back very high. Air conditioning came back very high, and also taking care of what we have was on the list as well. The two highest pieces was AC and CTE. So that's really the reasoning, when we talked to Magellan, looked at what package do we hit, what is the sweet spot? You know, one sixty fit the need just for the bare minimum. To get more and to enhance to get AC, we added on the thirty million, the fifty million for CTE to get to that two twenty.
Todd, can I just pause for a second? The, if we went with option one for Berthoud, that would be adding an air conditioning to the three schools, what is the cost to air condit, approximate cost in air conditioning Berthoud, Ivy and Turner?
Yeah, so we have a slide. Yeah.
Sorry.
Yeah. Because I can't remember exactly. So that, that's just the highlight of what we want to look at, is the difference between the two, and why the difference to two twenty is important to note, is that's what the survey showed is if you're going to do something more, this is what we want in it, is the CTE and air conditioning. So what we were just looking at is, this is, so this, all this information is assumed that option one, we had to make something to do the data. So this data that you'll see throughout is assuming option one. When you look at just the AC, that again, pulled high, if we do option one, you know, that takes care of Ivy, Berthoud, and Turner. And then you add in another thirty million for the rest of the district, you know, that's an investment of almost fifty million dollars in AC, so. That's a pretty good story to tell with that two twenty, it's not just about adding the thirty, but it's also saying, okay, there's another eighteen to twenty that is going into Berthoud. So it's a total investment of about fifty million dollars towards AC. The purpose of this slide isn't really to show, you know, we got those three that are highlighted would, would be done. We did, we'll go through another process, as you can see, it's already kind of started about, okay, here's the schools that don't have it, you know, from that thirty million, then how do we spread that out to the rest of the district? It's a pretty significant amount that, you know, there'll be a lot of square foot it's touched, so it's not like there's previous, you know, when we were looking at the million, two million to do, you know, cafeteria gyms, this is, we're doing schools at a time. So that's what that additional thirty million gets. Also to note, it's just, it takes that deferred maintenance down as well, so it's good, really, you're doubling, you're investing in the AC, but it also takes, like we talked about, that deferred maintenance now as well. Something, once the, and it, well, if the board elects to go with the bond, our proposal is to do a school snapshot. So this will be public, so each, any committee member can go to this website, you can click on the school, and you get general information, so you can see when it was built, capacity, enrollment, costs per square foot of energy, and then it'll go into the capital leads, so then everyone can say, okay, if you click on, you know, this is big, big T, for example, and this is not the final number, this is total leads. But then you say, okay, so big T would get X for maintenance, X for safety, and X for enhancements. Trying to be more transparent and do all we can to just put the information out to the public. You can really then, you know, once we solidify the amount, so we need first the amount solidified, you know, if the board says, okay, two twenties is it, then we can solidify the numbers to twenty, and then we're ready really to make this dashboard live, so. It's exciting because it shows, you know, the geographical area, the details of the school that typically we all kind of get asked about one time or another, is how old is that school, or how much, what is going there, or what's the program? So this is proposed to be one-stop shop for just the way to get the information out there.
I do too. It's not ready yet?
It is, but yeah.
We don't want to get ahead of the board. We'll post it tonight if you'd like.
It actually, just for the plug, it's, it's through GIS, so we have someone on staff that does GIS, and it's all in through our GIS system, so. It's a layered system, it does, yeah, everything. So maintenance needs, you know, I will kind of click through, you know, there's several slides here, so. If it's okay, even a president, if there's questions about specific schools, you know, I'll just kind of generally talk through and maybe stop if there's a question, because it's.
Can I just say one thing, and one thing that I asked Todd to do, and I know it was a request of the board, is show pictures, you know, I think pictures, because we can use narratives and charts and things, but pictures, you know, say a lot, and so I think these are examples of things that we want to share and illuminate for the community as well.
So what you see in all, all these slides is broken down into our buckets, so security, maintenance, educational enhancement. You know, for example, what looks like a piece of paint on that door that's actually a hole through the door, you know, so that's an example of a piece that needs fixed, the, you know, big T is an older school, but you know, there's cracking, it's, there's settling, so there's cracking in exterior facade, so. We talk about maintenance needs and high priority needs, those are some of the pieces that we need to capture. Moving on, between Kerry Martin and Centennial, again, just different examples, Centennial is boiler system. The play pad there, you know, it's not, there's some safety concerns, I'll say, so it's, it's those pieces. You'll see consistent themes throughout these pictures, but it's, you know, play pads that have cracks in them that students, you know, trips and falls in those pieces, so that's some of the reoccurring themes you'll see here.
Did these come from the staff or people, things that you guys found?
Yeah, so both, so we had a firm in general look at the big systems like H-Raclet School, but actually, it's been a task of staff, you know, if main staff's listening, thank you. They've done all the buildings and taken pictures to really make sure that each item that's in here is something that they've seen within their system. So all these are captured within our recorder system, and it's, they sit there, but yeah, so these all come from the staff. Ninety percent of them, some of the bigger systems, we had an engineer look at, look at the systems.
When everybody went out presenting the idea of the bond and the needs in each school, did staff offer suggestions, did staff in the school offer anything at that point in time, or were they just listening?
There was a few offerings, yeah, you know, there was, candidly, there was offerings about in the last bond, your design process was this, can we do it this way? So there's that type of feedback, there's feedback, hey, did you get this? What about that? So yeah, there was, there was, the staff's very familiar, when, you know, when you talk about needs in their building, the staff's very familiar with saying, oh yeah, I know this is broke over here.
Okay, that's what I just wondered.
Yeah. Candidly, that was something that we're going to capture again, all the needs, but yes, then that was, that conversation was there. Anyway, moving on to Garfield, Lorraine Edmison, so Lorraine Edmison has a security piece in there, so you'll see that on some of the elementary schools. They only have a secure vestibule, so that's the investment in secure vestibules that you see. They have kind of secured corridors, but not the secure vestibules. Same thing in Namaqua, you see security line out in there, that's really to make a true vestibule, rather than, you know, just securing their corridors. Panosa, Sarah Milner and Stansbury. So again, just for example, Stansbury, we have some settling in the gym, so it's fixing that, and then obviously the floor after that. Sarah Milner, again, the piece is mechanical, and then the safety of the secure vestibule. Trust good, you can see the other awareness, I guess to point out to the board, is the age of the building also correlates with the amount of enhancement, so you'll notice that there's more dollars towards educational enhancement in the older schools than it is in the new, so that was very purposeful. Working with the MPC and a lot of comments from staff is great, but what does the old schools get, so? Not that we'll fix everything again, but there is more investment in the older schools in that educational enhancement. As you go through, you'll notice then the newer schools. That's why these are all red, you know, when you look at River View, I Plains, Peak View, they have really most, they have the new, when you look at the educational enhancements, they have it, so that's why this is really just the maintenance items that we need to touch up. And so for example, the, you know, like on Peak View, that parking lot, you know, is a few hundred thousand dollar item, you know, and that they have an old play pad that's there, so. Those are just some of the pieces that are still on the list. Again, Bill Reed, more significant upgrade in Bill Reed is suggested, so you see security is about almost five million. Having an architect look at the building, you can't really just do a vestibule there, you've got to structurally change something. So there is a few, without getting ahead of the staff, there's a few options they're looking at, but it's, it's a large structural change in the building, so. Trying to, one, be mindful and respectful of the facade, so, I mean, it'd be easy just pop something on, probably cheap. But again, that's an older historic building that we'll be mindful of the way it looks. The architects look in different ways to either not make it look like an addition, so when you walk to it, it's really enhancing the front, and then coming in that first level kind of inside and do that. At the ground level, and then you have to do something, you know, a little bit more with the interior remodel, and then shifting the classroom around, so it takes classroom space, so it's recreate classroom space. Or looking at, you know, changing the entrance to the west side, you know, the west side lends itself more to an addition, because it's got more like an industrial look, it's got, you know, the stairs and those pieces, so. You know, the solution's not finalized, but there's a few solutions that are priced in here, so that's what you'll see, that investment of that almost five million. Ninety percent of it's towards just how do you make that a true secure vestibule? Same thing at Irwin, you know, that is actually a pretty complex entryway, so it's really safety focused there. There'll probably be some sort of addition out front, it's to really create a barrier, right now, you kind of go in, and then you can go right or left, and there's still traffic, it's secure, but to bring them back to our standards, that's what, that's what you'll notice in Irwin is a major priority. And the asphalt that has crater-sized cracks in it. Wall Clark, it's the same sort of items there. Enhancements, you'll see there's a pretty significant amount of enhancement there, so. Typical to the other schools too, when you look at the age of Wall Clark or the older elementaries, there's just more opportunities there, so. We did some of the last one, when you look at the library, you know, upgrading those pieces like TV, and then it was extending that out a little more. And then still the maintenance pieces that you can see here. Ferguson, there's not much for maintenance, so. One piece, we just lumped all the CTE into this graph, so. The goal is, once we finalize the number, say it's two twenty, we have a proposed kind of phase two of TCC. So if it is in the two twenty range, you know, there's fifteen million towards like a pathway expansion. Some of that would be proposed to take to the high schools, so like Mount View's culinary, or TV's welding, or, you know, those pieces, it's to start, one, do the central upgrade and addition to TCC, but then expand that out in the high schools and start doing the upgrades at the high schools at the, for CTE.
There you go.
So right now it's lumped in just one lump number within that kind of program, but the 15 million would be spread out to a few. And then Bertha High, you can see there's, well, there's a lot of things to do everywhere with those, there's an example of a few. Mount View, we actually shut down the tennis courts because of what kind of shape they're in. And Mount View's, you know, seems like a newer school, it's 20 plus years old, so it's not new anymore, so these are the things that-
It's hard to believe, but it is, that's right.
Yeah. These are the things that if we don't start taking care of them, you can see how there, those costs are stacking up. Low and High, again, the enhancement and maintenance, this is heavy on some mechanical work. Roofing's still a pretty big deal there, and there's just a lot of system upgrades that are needed to develop. Thompson Valley, the picture on the left is of the choir room, so we have a ADA issue there, so, you know, one of the proposals is to help fix that. We looked at doing it through just annual cap funds, it's a pretty significant investment, so that, the picture on the right is the gym floor, you know, so anyway, there's just things that age is shown, that's what you see here. And these are just general pictures, you know, that we've shown throughout, it's, you know, between the playground equipment, equipment at Ponrosa, or playground equipment here, the cracks in the wall at Bertha, you know, anyway, you know, we just want to show just more examples of the need that's out there in the different schools. There was also questions about what does medium priority look like, you know, compared to high? You know, some of the mediums, you can see, for example, like the Ponrosa, Ponrosa settling in the bottom right, it doesn't mean that, you know, it's an issue. It is settling, we need to fix it, but, you know, it's also not high, kind of like a true safety issue, so it just shows some of those differences, but, you know, if you ask me, the asphalt at Bill Reed is a safety issue, even though we have, we'll kind of label down as a medium. There's, there's a lot of, you know, we have a grading scale and a rating scale for each item that we've gone through. And I say we, it's been, you know, we've looked at it with MPC and our staff, we've just gone through each item to see where it is on the scale. And then the priority needs of 20 to 30, so for example, the boilers, Wall Clark, we know that they are going to be replaced here in the next few years. They don't right now, but if we don't get ahead of it, there's failure there. The playground trust good, anyway, so we go through all these, those are just projecting out here the needs in 20 to 30. If we don't take care of something now, we're going to have more significant needs in the future. So just safety, I touched on this, but we'll just review it one more time. The example of Bertha Elementary, this Sarah Milner, those are the examples of the secure vestibules. We did upgrades in 2018, but there's additional that are needed there. Review the Bill Reed, and that's the more significant out of the 10 million that's proposed. And, you know, when you look at overall educational enhancement needs, we lumped in the cost of air conditioning, and so that's why it's 130 million, so if you were to just put air conditioning, it's not really maintenance, it's, you know, it could just sit maintenance. We put it in overall enhancement needs, so that's why that's 130 million. But in the proposed 220, you know, it's 15 million to CTE, 30 million to AC throughout the district, and then 35 million across the district for educational enhancement needs. So the other thing I'll note is, I know, you know, we spend a lot of time talking about the 75 million in Bertha. When you take that, you know, a lot of the work and focus is in the rest of the district, so it's just something, you know, to point out note that when you look at the AC, the maintenance, the enhancements, I mean, that's a significant investment in every school throughout the district. And this is just a conceptual model of what the addition could look like at TCC to expand the pathway. And I believe that's, all right, and that's where Gordon picks up.
Yep. So I think, I think we can all agree, when you look at those pictures, there's needs out there. Some people might have a higher priority on one area than another, but needs that are out there in the district nonetheless. So at this point in the presentation is when I become the most disliked person in Thompson School District of talking about what, how does that get paid for? And who, who, what the impact to a taxpayer could look like with these levels. So this is that continuum that you've seen previously from 160 million to 350 million. Again, having to draw a line in the sand somewhere, none of these figures set in stone at this point, but a 220 potential, a $220 million potential bond package would result in approximately a 3.39 mil increase for a residential property owner. So that translates, when you say, well, 3.3 mils, I don't really know what that means, how does that translate? We'll talk about that a little more in just a second, but roughly per hundred thousand dollars of home value, it'd be about $22, $22.39 annually, per hundred thousand. As soon as I say that, I'm going to move on to the next slide, and you'll say, well, on this calculator that has been offered up as an example, this shows $600,000 home, so if I were to divide this figure that shows the annual property tax of $123.68, by six, I should get the same number. That's not the case, and I'll explain the math just very briefly. It has to do mostly with, kind of in the upper third there, you'll see the less the residential credit per state statute of $55,000. That's the special session that the governor called last year, the legislation that was passed in the special session to offer some level of property tax relief, not in the 24 session, but the 23 session. So the 24 session, there has been, there was a piece of legislation passed that calls for benefits or trying to lessen the tax burden a bit. Keep in mind that, and I will say this, I should, you see the disclaimer at the bottom here, with calculations are based upon current property tax laws and are estimates for illustrative purposes only. Those laws are very much in flux right now. There is a law in place, so if nothing changes, we know what our tax rates, how the calculations would take place for next year. However, in the November ballot season, there are any number of public initiated initiatives that could be on the ballot that could be passed by taxpayers, by voters in the state, that could change these numbers. Likely, it would make them better than what these numbers show, but it, the current law is a very, the one that was just recently passed in the last session is very unique. For the first time in Colorado's history, there's two assessed values on yours, on the same property. So one homeowner has one home, and it's taxed at two different levels. There's an assessed valuation for school districts, and there's an assessed valuation for all other districts or taxing entities that are out there. So I just want to put that disclaimer out there and let everybody know that's the case, but nonetheless, an example of what this could look like for a $600,000 house. Let me also add, should the board elect to move forward with being on the ballot in November, we would make this available on the district website so individuals could go and type in their value, where it says input value here, very intuitive, I know, and highlighted in green to put the value or their estimated or actual value of their house to get an idea of what that would be. So based on current law, what we will be under for assessments that take place in the 2025 year, pending any outcomes of a November election, so there's a lot of things that could change here, but this gives a fairly reasonable idea, I think, of what the bill levy rate would be at about 3.4 mils. And again, this is on a $220 million bond package. Would result in, for a $600,000 valued home, about $124 per year in taxation. That is all we have for the bond portion, Act Two, so questions we could entertain.
Okay. Let's start with, Stu, do you have anything on that?
I don't.
Okay.
Nothing, for me.
So I have a couple of questions. Yeah, I think one, I think it was in one of your weekly update emails to us, talked about like nutrition services, and there was some question about creating like a central kitchen for doing some of the prep work, because some of the schools are having difficulty with doing all of that. Has that, has there been any talk about including that in this?
Gordon? Yeah, Todd, go first, and then I'll offer my comments. Yeah, actually, we met with the directors of IT and Nutrition Service today, and in the last couple of weeks, and have a plan that is included. It's about, say, 2 million-ish, I don't really exactly write it, 2 million. What we're going to do is taking the SSC building, where the techs, IT techs currently are, if you pull them out, it actually creates a space of about 4,000 square feet that you could put a nutrition service one in and design what you like, what would their kitchen look, their district kitchen, so. Yes, there's some logistics, we're working on through some warehouses, some storage pieces, but we work with both those departments to come up with, okay, if you give up this base and we put this here, which is exciting, because when you look at the price tag of a central kitchen, just like if you're Bill Stanlone, you're in the 15 to 20 million, this solution in the 2 million-ish range captures what Nutrition Services was looking for.
Okay. And then my second question, that I don't know that there's really an answer for, but in thinking about, like, you know, we always look at schools and school enrollment, and there's schools that are under enrolled. And so then, like, where does it play in if we're like putting all this money into schools that we might have to then close in a few years because they don't have enough kids, do you know what I mean? Like, I don't, I don't, has there been any like consideration about that, or what's the thought? Are we just like throwing money away?
I'll say, there's, there are no plans to close schools
Right.
in the next, I would say, three to five years.
Okay.
At all. And that being said, I think what's listed here are things like that have to be done in order for these buildings to be habitable and compliant with safety, we would have to do these, so yeah, so I would say that we're investing in, and now I understand your point, like, some schools, we're watching enrollment. I would, there's nothing imminent at this time, and we certainly would build a very long runway for conversation, but at this point, we have, there's no conversation at this point.
Okay. Well, and your, your answer helps too, like, even, even if there were, it's stuff that has to be done, in a way?
Correct, absolutely.
Okay. Okay. And I did have another question, but I don't remember what it was, so maybe I'll think of it, I'm back around.
Mine, it's tied to the bond, but it also kind of segues into the next topic in that when we have something like the tennis courts at Mountain View High School, how, how does it get to that level when we're just doing maintenance every year? And similar to like, I think it was Trustgood, the carpet? In that, is carpet so expensive to replace that we have to wait till we can put it into a bond? And so in the meantime, kids just have this grungy carpet? I mean, I, and, and if we get into that special mill, I would, I would want this addressed in. How will this help with this maintenance money being set aside specifically to make more of this happen and not build up while preening up money for salaries? But it's just, I just find it interesting that we have carpet, like, why does carpet have to wait for a bond? And how did the tennis courts, not that you guys are neglect, but like, how, how is it?
Well, in the carpet, for example, so we could replace all the carpet in, say, three schools right now, but then we're not doing the air conditioner that's broke, or we're not, so that we're putting all of our money in maintenance yearly to the high needs, and carpet's not a high need. You know, so we're taking care of things that, the safety things, the doors that are broken, the units that aren't working. The money that we have for capital upgrades each year go towards more of those, well, they do, they go towards the high priority needs. Carpet, it's not unsafe, it's unsightly, it's not unsafe.
To be watched.
Yeah, and it's, when you look at the priority of needs out there, it falls in the, you know, more of that lower priority, not in the high priority.
I would, my follow up to that is, one, when we replace the carpet, I would hope that we're moving towards the squares that can be ripped out or replaced instead of having to redo the whole room. And two, from the lower priority, as someone, as you guys are well aware of, as I sit here and cough a lot, carpet can really, it really can aggravate, agitate when you have really bad environmental allergies. And so I get what you're saying about maybe it's not as high priority as AC, but when you have someone who's really sensitive to dust and environmental stuff, it, it is a big deal. Just saying.
I didn't have any, I don't think. Amy, do you have any questions on this part?
No, thank you.
Okay. All right. Done. Almost forgot, sorry.
How quick can we put the GIS stuff out?
Yeah, that's really cool.
As quickly as we can get a number from the board, I'll say.
Okay, cool.
Yeah. I mean, it's, it's ready to go, I just, to be respectful of my, all the work we're doing. I don't want to put something out there that we're changing numbers, so that way when it's, the door says, okay, if you do, here's what it is, we can set it, and it can be out, so, yeah.
It looks great, thank you.
Stu, Nancy Moore? Anybody else?
So I did think of another question, which is sort of related to the kitchen question. With the current bond, there was also like a bucket of funding for district wide projects or sort of like that, and I'm assuming that there would be with this as well?
There is, yes, that when you look at this building, SSC, there's still those maintenance needs that are, yep, first of all.
Okay.
Okay. All righty. On to the next part.
All right, as we move forward now into Act Three, or as I like to refer to it, the Gordon Soliloquy for the special levy review. This is something I've, I've tried to, I've hopefully given some information to the board. You have an idea of what the, what it entails, but I think what I'm trying to do here, and I know these are very text intensive slides, and I'm not going to read them verbatim, but really to, on this slide, to explain the two different MLOs. And I've referenced the Colorado Revised Statute that applies here. One is with the, I'll call it a typical or standard MLO, mill levy override. The one that we're considering here is a special levy, and again, I've referenced statute on both of those. So the typical mil is, is one, just like the district has passed in the, in the previous history, we have three in place right now. And the key part is what's highlighted in yellow there, that the total additional local property tax revenues shall not exceed under any circumstances 25% of the district's total program. Total program is funded pupil count times per pupil revenue. We can have, in our MLOs, we can collect 25% of that. And this year, 23, 24, was the first year that the district hit that threshold. Now, next year, we know as PPR goes up, our total program goes up incrementally, that 25% can increase incrementally too, we can take 25% of that incremental increase, but it's not nearly at a level that we've seen in the past with any time a new MLO was passed. So the special levy language that you see in the second part of this slide talks about that, and I think the important part, again, is highlighted in yellow, to provide ongoing cash funding for the capital construction, new technology, existing technology upgrade, and maintenance needs of the district. That is directly from statute, it spells out very specifically what these dollars can be used for. But when we move on to the next slide and see example ballot language for two successful special levy elections that have been taking place in Colorado. The first one in 2021, the other one in 2023. The first one is from- The first one, uh, is from, um, Cherry Creek School District that was on their November twenty-twenty ballot. And then Inglewood, which, uh, was just on the November twenty-twenty-three ballot. Both of these were, were successful. These are just examples of what the ballot language can look like, um, for, um, what's, what's involved. The interesting part to me, both of these, um, in the first one, in order to make more general fund revenues available for a litany of items there. But it also, uh, talks about at the bottom that, um, that it's, that you have to, you, you have to use the dollars that are collected to be used for those items that I just referenced. Capital construction, technology, upgrade, technology upgrades, maintenance, those types of things. The second one, um, starts out with, um, typical more, more table-related ballot, uh, language. But then it also gets to the, um, um, about halfway down. Such revenue will be utilized to offset costs, which will free up more general fund revenue for purposes such as continuing to attract and retain quality staff, including, but not limited to teachers, custodians. They go on and on. You can, you can be very specific. Some of the magic in ballot questions, in the writing of the ballot question, is to, um, to give guidance, but not have, uh, as hard and fast deadlines that you shall, the district shall, only this amount to this area, um, to give the board the ability to choose within those broadly defined parameters what they want to spend those dollars on. So we move on to this slide and, and you've seen this before. Really, the, the key comment is in the bottom right quadrant of this, dollars freed up in these areas could fund salaries, benefits and other needs. Somewhat similar to the size bond offering that we just talked about, but, uh, this would be about a three-point-nine-six mill, um, increase. Would, um, for every hundred thousand dollars of home value, would be about twenty-six dollars and fifty-three cents annually. It's not as readily, um, evident on this, but when you move to the next slide, the, some of the work is identifying what's currently budgeted by the district on, in our current budget and in the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-five proposed budget. These are twenty-four, twenty-five preliminary budget figures. I have gone through the, the budget and picked out items that I think are within those categories of maintenance, capital projects, ITS repairs and maintenance. And there's both non-FTE and FTE that you see there. So the non-FTE is pretty straightforward. It's our capital projects, those things where we are repairing, trying to do repairs, um, that are of a, a bit larger, um, scale. A little further down that list, operations and maintenance, those day-to-day things that we know are going to come up every year, that we have to fix. But we're not, um, budgeting a, a big project for those. So about seven million dollars has been identified in non-FTE expenditures. And on the FTE side, which is the right side of this slide, taking sixty percent of the salaries for repair, maintenance-type positions. Custodial, there's another school district in the, uh, state that has, uh, is using, um, almost a hundred percent of their salaries for custodial as part of a, a special levy, um, that they had passed. Facilities and operations, these are, are maintenance items, our grounds crew, our HVAC, our carpentry, our plumbing. All of those salaries for those individuals you can see there as well, from both a classified and an APT, um, perspective. So about six-point-one million identified in, in FTE costs that could be used for a thirteen-million-dollar targeted, um, potentially proposed, uh, special levy. That could look something like ten million dollars, and, and again, these are just possibilities. Ten million dollars of that thirteen million to be used for, um, salaries and benefits. With three million to be used for, uh, in that three million, it could be a special ITS project that's needed for the next year. It could be that Mountain View tennis court. It could be the carpet in the Garfield third grade, um, room that needs to be replaced. That savings account, or I, I don't like the word savings account, but those freed-up funds could be used there. Dollars not spent could be accumulated. They, they're held in reserve. Part of the statute, um, if you go read the, the full statute, these funds have to be deposited. It's a requirement to deposit them in a separate fund. It's part of the general fund, but you deposit them in a separate fund. The good news of that is the district practice in the past has been for each of the MLOs that we have, we do exactly that. We record them in a sub-fund of the general fund. So Fund Ten is our general fund. The three MLOs are Funds Twelve, Thirteen and Fourteen right now. This could be Fund Fifteen. Anything below twenty rolls up, collapses into the overall general fund in our annual reporting. So.
Gordon, is it a true statement that a portion of that money could also be maybe set aside for air conditioning?
Absolutely. There could be an initiative by the board that says, as an example, we want one million dollars a year of this thirteen million to be used for air conditioning. Chipping away at the need that is out there. And you've heard Todd say tonight, our needs in air conditioning are, are large across the district. And it's not going to solve it overnight, but it would give a, a potential revenue source that's available to prioritize that on a, on an as-available or as-needed basis that could be used, um, with those dollars as well. Very similar to what we saw on the, on the proposed bond or a potential bond. Again, on a six-hundred-thousand-dollar valued home, just what I put in here, you can follow the math to know how your school district-related property taxes would be calculated at about a three-point-nine or four-mill, uh, rate. This would be a hundred and forty-five dollars per year on a six-hundred-thousand-dollar house. And I think the, uh, if I'm recalling correctly, the bond was approximately a hundred and thirty dollars per year on a six-hundred-thousand-dollar house. So it's at two-seventy-five, two-hundred-and-eighty dollars per year for both. If there were, uh, if the board so chose to have, um, ballot questions and they were both successful, about two-seventy-five or two-eighty a year in property tax increase for those two initiatives for a residential property owner of a six-hundred-thousand-dollar home. Next steps, and, and I'll talk a little bit more about this in, in just a second. These are really maybe not next steps, but steps that have already been completed in the process. You've seen this slide before, but, uh, you'll notice the, the language there, reviewing input and data to help inform the recommendations for the bond size of two-hundred to two-hundred-and-twenty million. The typical timing is either in June or August for a Board of Education to, um, declare their intent of being on a ballot. That's done by the adoption of a resolution, which, which, um, actually in the resolution is the actual ballot language. That's prepared by, um, through the assistance of our, the district's municipal advisor and primarily the bond council, that would help craft that ballot language based on input of what is, is determined to be the, the proper wording, that the board's desire of how they want it worded, what they want to mention as potential uses of those dollars, um, those types of things. And then related to that is, um, key dates. If the board were to be considering a, um, to be on the ballot in November for a bond and/or special levy, um, the most imminent date is July twenty-sixth, and that's an important one. And you can see, these are by statute, uh, the, the reporting or the notifications or the agreements that have to be in place. So a hundred days before the election happens to be on weekends, so they moved it back to Friday this year on July twenty-sixth. We are cognizant that the board does not meet in July. So I have reached out to the county clerks who, who, um, facilitate this. And I've heard from two of the three already that said, just by sending us the email, you have given us written notification that you might be on the ballot.
Oh, okay.
So it's not, it's non-binding, but it's just a preliminary, like, we're, we're strongly thinking about it.
Yep. So really, the important date, by August twenty-seventh, to have a IGA or intergovernmental agreement with each one of the counties because they have to, they, they, they don't have to, but they choose to, um, set a rate that they charge. Anybody that's on the ballot, if you have ballot initiatives, there's a, a price that, uh, you have to pay for the printing of the ballots and mailing them out. Really, the most important date on here at this point is the September sixth date. That's, um, as I talked with one of our county clerks today, um, that is really the, the go-no-go date. Because that's after the September sixth, they are starting to print ballots. And they don't want you to come to them on September fifteenth and say, eh, never mind. Because they've already started the printing process. So that's a very important date. So the July twenty-sixth date is not one to be, it's certainly one to be aware of and, and know, be aware of, but it's not a, uh, there's, there's no formal vote that's required by the board or anything like that for that July twenty-sixth date. And then you can see on down the list as, as it progresses and gets closer to a potential liberal ballot. Those are the questions I have, or not the questions, the, uh, the answers or the presentation I have on the special levy.
The only thing I would say, I would say for, um, public awareness and transparency sake, we will probably come to you at your June meeting and not ask for a formal vote, but ask you just to say, is the board still considering about? So in order to meet that July twenty-sixth compliance, you know, just saying that we're kind of sort of strongly thinking about it. We just want the board to at least weigh in and say, yeah, we're strongly thinking about it. So we're not quite sure how, we won't formally vote on it, but we probably will want some type of public indication that the board is strongly thinking about it.
How much are questions? Denise, you want to start?
Sure. So is that a ballpark set of figures or is that what we would want to ask for? Is it, is that number locked in for the, no?
The special levy, the, uh, please, Dr. Shufa.
So we are, so for the bond dollar for the two-hundred-and-twenty million, again, we, um, based on Magellan Strategy Survey, we know that, um, one-sixty polled the best, two-fifty polled less than the best. We know that, so we, we believe that two-fifty might be too much because the margins are pretty thin. But we know that one-sixty is safe, uh, safer. Knowing that air conditioning and CTE are high priority needs for our community and knowing that we need to get over the one-sixty to get that, that's how we landed on the two-twenty. There's nothing magical about the two-twenty. But again, the assumptions that we just shared with you this evening are built on that. The, um, special levy of thirteen million, um, again, takes into account, um, part of it is based on the, um, the, the calculations that Gordon did in terms of being able to supplant or, um, you know, replace from the general fund, we need to be able to, um, account for that. And we felt that thirteen million was justifiable. Even though we do have a district to the south that were, was a little more, um, aggressive with, with some of that. We, we took more of a, um, conservative approach on that and, and that's how we landed on, on those dollars as well. We were also mindful, quite honestly, of, um, the, of our community and, and where, you know, um, knowing that there's a cost and there's an ask, we wanted to ask for what we need and, and be modest about it as opposed to maybe, or we could be more aggressive. But we feel like this would be, um, in the range of what our needs are as a district.
Alexandra, anything?
No, I was gonna ask about the, the same, the thirteen million number, which you explained.
Um, first, I really appreciate, um, Gordon, you humoring me all these months of hounding you about this. And it all started with the delivery of the breakfast burritos. Like, he was a captive. He couldn't go anywhere.
But that's right. You guys are partnered together.
It's like, wow, he's stuck with me. So, here we go.
I'll volunteer for that duty again.
But that aside, um, I think to, for me, to move this forward, uh, I like the language of some of those, but I would also, and I'm not sure how we would word it, some language that also said, you know, I don't know. Some X percent or dollar amount is going to always be set aside to stay in there, to build up the fund so that if, you know, a major roof and that those funds in particular would need board approval to spend it. I, and, and so I think that just helps solidify that this is truly a way to prepare a plan, um, for future really big maintenance needs that don't have to wait till we do a bond because over time, maybe not in my lifetime, there'll be enough work and, you know, do other things. But, um, that's, that's my main feedback and, um, I think it would also just help really, you know, make our attractiveness as a school district because we'll have that additional money and even like the Chromebooks for Kelly's, uh, technology replacement. The name of the Chrome just escaped my head, but, um, it'll make it more easy.
Some for all.
Oh, that's a wrong.
Tech for all. Oh, tech.
But now that would be able to come out of this and we wouldn't have to like, how are we gonna put that in the general fund? And then, so I, I really think that this is, this is a mill levy or a special levy assessment that I would fully support.
All I can say is when I looked at those two, I thought, hmm, how many voters are gonna read through all of that? So I asked that we be very careful in how we word it because by the time, and I've heard people say, I think it was at our meeting last week, they talked about how long our ballot was gonna be this year. And we, you know, school stuff comes obviously at the end. So it's like, okay. Yeah. So anyway, whoever's doing the language of it, don't make it so long that it will just get, eh, no, because that's too much to read.
Can we have thirteen million?
Yeah. I don't know.
Part of it is really to protect the district and also it's really for transparency for the community. And so, um, the language does spell out exactly what your, where your dollars are going. And so, um, I know we have our, our municipal advisors or bond, you know, planners that are experts in these, but I think some of this is statutorily defined, like, we want to be very clear.
Yeah. All right. Amy, anything more, huh?
No, thank you. All of my questions have been answered.
Okay. All right. Anybody else?
Don and Stu.
Oh, Don and Stu. I'm sorry. Don.
I, I just, I, I guess that I was excited to see how the language was written, given that it talks about staff because we know that that was the feedback of the odd from people about the bond is like, but where's the staff? And so we know how important it is for some people to see that called out. So it was great to see kind of, oh, some language. It just helps us to be able to do that, albeit briefly, um, because we know that people may only vote for the people.
Yeah. Stu?
Okay. Um, thanks for the two samples that were on the slides. Are there any other districts in Colorado that are using these special, special levies?
There are. There's, I believe, six or seven that have had successful elections thus far. And there are a, a number of districts that are pursuing the very same avenue at, at the November election.
Are there any drawbacks to this?
More money to be able to spend on needs of the district. My answer would be no.
Okay. Is it possible that there are folks who will say, well, you have this special fund, it's like a savings account, why are you coming back to the district asking for more money?
There would, uh, there would certainly be those questions. And my response, and Todd can a- answer as well, is for, from a bond-related perspective, those projects are much too large. Um, the majority of those projects are much too large to be satisfied with the, the dollars that would be generated in a special levy. That would be my, my simplest answer.
And then finally, is there a deadline for spending with special mill levy funds?
There is not, to my knowledge.
So it is truly a savings account?
I will check on that. It's, it's very similar. It, it, it is part of the reserve balance, um, that, that the district maintains.
Okay.
So as long as it's, uh, unassigned or uncommitted, it's, yeah, it's available.
Okay, thanks. Okay, thanks.
I've just, can I just, just to follow up on the, so as far as the taver relates, the way that this is structured, whatever's unspent, uncommitted, will just go into the, into the reserves, but does it, has it been, get complicated and tied up in all of the different taver, because this was written to allow districts to save, and my understanding was it does it, I just want to make sure I.
That's my understanding as well, it does not, if you look at those two ballot examples, um, Cherry Creek in the very last sentence or two of theirs, they reference that this allows them to keep, uh, keep the revenue earned from this calculation, they have to put that language, because they are one of the two or three districts in the state that have not detavered.
Anybody else? Thank you, you three, for spending so much time on this and helping us unpack our thinking and giving us some clear thoughts, um, helping us move forward with this.
I also want to, uh, thank, uh, Stu, because I know he was the one who proposed, uh, the special meeting, I think, um, given the magnitude and the importance of this topic, to be able to have a thoughtful and productive conversation, um, that was, um, that provides a lot of information, um, I, it was great, so I, we appreciate that, and also for the board for engaging, um, so well in this, and again, to the team for, I know there's a lot of work that went into this. As a reminder, um, we will come back to you at our meeting in June, um, with a proposal, um, for a potential bond and mil, we will not ask you to vote on it, but basically, we'll recreate highlights of this conversation in our formal regular session meeting, uh, probably, again, might ask for like a thumbs up or thumbs down in terms of is there interest in at least considering or pursuing, I'm not sure how we'll frame it, but just so we can meet that July 26th deadline. In August, when we come back at our working session, we will tee this up, so we'll tee it up as a proposal, assuming the board wants to move forward, and then at our second meeting, our, our meeting, our working, our business meeting in August, the board would be asked to then formally vote on this, and we would have to, I think there, it's pretty formal, right, in terms of the setting and several.
It's a resolution, adoption of resolution, that would, within that resolution, ballot language.
If there are additional, um, questions that have resulted from this presentation, and certainly, we've got plenty of time to answer questions, if you need more information, um, please, you can send it as a, as an RFI, and, uh, we will work on those for you as well to be able to answer.
On August 5th, 4th, 5th?
I think it's the 5th, it's a Monday, isn't it?
The Monday that we're having our retreat, it's Monday?
Isn't it Monday, I think it's the 5th.
Um, from 10 to 3, up here at?
The Fort?
The Fort is where we will meet, um, similar to what we did at the clubhouse for me, you know, at my place, where, and then last year, we did it up at the Fort, and then we'll have our regular study session setup.
Correct.
Correct, yes, so, but this, on the 4th, 5th, um, it will deal with items that are not typical, they're gonna be items that are related to us as a board, and so I will be sending out a little search for information kind of thing that will come out sometime this next week with just your thoughts, um, for the board, but not necessarily our PD that we get from, it's just our stuff, okay? Anything else? Right.
Legis- legislative platform work?
We have that on our working session, and we can't do it for the special meeting, because.
No, I, I knew that, so will that happen at our meeting next week, or the initial work, will that happen next week?
Initial work.
Or will that not happen until August?
It will happen at our, the initial work will happen at our, our next meeting in June 5th, yeah.
I think that's right, yeah.
And hopefully, all of you have received, uh, samples, um, that could be part of that legislative platform. Lorley, I think it might be helpful on Wednesday if we had hard copies of that as well, because.
I'll forward it to you, I sent it to the board today.
Because I'm thinking we might divide into groups to knock out some parts of this a little faster, and if people actually had paper copies, it might be faster than looking at, uh, a screen, so.
Okay, um, anybody have anything else they need to share? This meeting's adjourned.